Want me to run real quick?
No, she can come in. She comes in, man, enough people to get started at least.
You say?
When you want.
Right.
Well, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the July 5th, 2022 meeting of the zoning board of appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening. Carl Hinger, Alan Donnelly, Janet La Forgea, Lisa Temple, Richard Briggs. Nahid Kaisar is apparently on her way. She'll be in any minute. Absent tonight are Larry Rushmeyer, Elijah Holings. Fran Lally, our Z E O, is also absent. The current agenda can be-
I'm sorry, excuse me, point of order. Please also note that the land use director, staff member, is here to debate. And also, please say which are, you have alternates that you're seating or?
Well, we haven't done any voting.
Okay, very good. While you were introducing people.
Yes.
Normally, at the beginning of the meeting, you seat the alternates and those alternates vote throughout the entire evening.
Okay, so if we want to see Richard.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman. If Nahid, if Nahid comes in.
Well, you can't seat her right now, can you, sir?
Right.
But is, yeah, so, and you, the rest of you are all regular members, is that right?
Yes, we have four regular members and one alternate.
All right, okay, so you, would you like to seat Mr. Briggs since he's here? Or would you like to wait for Ms. Kaisar?
Well, we do it as we go along. That's how we've always done it.
Yeah.
That's kind of how it works.
Really well. And Nahid is supposed to be here.
It allows for people to be seated in the instance that someone needs to recuse themselves.
Just so you know, it's very confusing to do it that way. I would highly recommend that this commission reconsider that. Particularly when, particularly when some of these appeals may go on an additional meeting. Because now you have to go back to the records and figure out who was voting on which. So it's just, in practice, it's just typically not done this way.
Well, we've done it this way for, in my experience, for over a year and there's never been any confusion, so.
Okay, so I'm perfectly happy hearing something that's, you know, worked before and we've always done it this way. But there are, sometimes we just don't do things the right way and so they should be changed.
Well.
It's just as recommendation, I happen to be the, you know, land, the land use director for a reason. I was, you know, hired to try to, you know, run the department in a way that I, that I see makes sense. Of course, it is your board, but I'm just making recommendations. If you choose not to take my recommendations, you know, there's no hard feelings, I'm perfectly fine with that. But I, I feel it's my duty to inform you.
Yeah, we, we are, we do later on have a discussion on the draft of the bylaws. We can discuss including that and making sure that those elements are clear for the future and-
Very good.
Agreed upon. Okay.
Thank you, and just second paragraph.
Yes. The current agenda can be found under board meetings on the town's website. I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call your property address, please come forward and tell us about your appeal. After we've gone through all the cases on the agendas tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and will deliberate in open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted.
Excuse me, point of order, there is no such thing as an open executive session. It's, it's a public hearing.
Deliberations, yes.
It's pub, in public, right.
We're changing that to deliberations.
We've already, we've already changed.
Okay, very good.
Yes, one second. Talk to Nina, I think she writes the scripts.
Okay.
It's-
Yes, originally, originally.
Tell Nina about David's scripts.
Sorry, Chairman.
It's fine. Uh, yeah, so, open deliberations.
Okay, we're, right.
You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. You're welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Note that in regards to any appeal that is granted, it is constrained to the plan submitted and to any purposes stated in the application unless the board specifically notes otherwise. The public hearing is only one aspect of the approval process and is for the purposes of accepting factual information and data bearing on this application and allows expression of opinion by interested parties. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. After reading into the record the correspondence received by the board relative to this application, we will ask the applicant to present the application in detail. The chair will then entertain questions of clarifications from board members concerning the applicant's presentation. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. As you're recognized, please state your name and address each time before you speak so that your comments may be legally recorded. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application. And in the view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. All right, so the first thing on the agenda is the review of last month's minutes.
I have a discussion on that, Mr. Chairman.
If you'd be taking a motion to approve the minutes first.
It's not approved, I mean, no.
Second. Oh, sorry.
I wasn't here.
You weren't.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we only have four voted members on this. You second?
Yes, yes, I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's two small things on, um. Okay, uh, Z. It's 128 Federal Road, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Z dash 22 dash 27.
Thank you very much. Um, two, two things. Um, one thing that's missing is I did quote Connecticut general statutes Title 8, Chapter 124, in particular, 8 dash 6. And then at the very end, it's very close, however, um, where I can go over the particulars on it, but anyways, when I was speaking to Attorney Marcus and the engineer, Michelle, they did confirm both of them, that the last two times that they were at that zoning meeting that I was discussing, that they were not disturbing any wetlands. That I didn't see in here, so I wanted to make a note of that, Mr. Chairman. And I double-checked the video on that and that's correct.
Okay, so you want to amend to have a specific, uh?
Yeah, I want to, I want to amend the minutes to include my reference referring to Title 8, Chapter 124, Section 8 dash 6 in particular. And also at the end of it where I asked Attorney Marcus and the engineer, Michelle, don't add a Sarah last name.
Macaulay.
Thank you very much, Macaulay, on whether the last two times, not, not just the last time, but the last two times they went before wetlands, that they were not disturbing any wetlands and they did both confirm that. They, they spoke in the affirmative. And I double-checked it in the video, Mr. Chairman. So that's what I'd like to make the motion for, so.
Okay, we have a second.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Uh, on favor of amending the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. So that the amendment passes for the zero. Okay, so then we have the review of correspondence, which are just the minutes of other meetings. So no actions needed on that. And on to the first public hearing is 438 Candlewood Lake Road, Z dash 22 dash 33. For this, because Nahid is not here, Richard, would you like to be a, you, be, would you be willing to be a voting member?
Uh, sure.
Yes, okay. I don't believe we have any written correspondence for this.
I don't remember seeing any, I'm, I'm still at it.
So come forward and tell us about your appeal.
Yeah, um, my name is Ralph Rosenfeld, 438 Candlewood Lake Road.
Good evening.
We are looking to put a three-season room up in the back. We, um, we were hoping to put it on the north side of the property, but with the septics, curtain, curtain drains, and assorted other items. Uh, we were forced into one location. On our original site plan that was approved, we had a pool in this area and we've decided to change it from a pool because of our age and honestly, we'll get more out of a three-season room than we would out of a pool even with the grandkids. So we, we've opted to go down there. We amended the site plan to put it in the only place that we had room to put it. That made sense and we're looking for that offset variance for that particular area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
So you, hi.
I'm also an engineer, so you can hammer away while you've got it. I'm good, I'm good, I'm used to this.
So you received a variance for a pool in that same area? Did I?
Um, it was in that general area. We didn't have anything locked down. We didn't go to building. We've done all the other work that was on the site plan and we just put that as a phase two. So it was on there. Fran had been out there on a number of occasions. Um, and like I said, we just opted to go in a different direction.
But the variance is still in place for the pool?
As far as I know, yeah. There's been nothing, nothing else is, was changed. The only thing we changed was from a pool to a three-season room.
Cause I don't see it listed on the, as a, an appeal number. I do see the shed, which I think you guys keep.
The shed, but it was in the, it was in the original, in the original site plan with first light, with everybody.
I see some of that.
And everything was there. On the original work, the shed was an afterthought.
Okay.
Okay, had nothing to do with the rest of the work. We tiered the entire backyard. We did all that with first light, all natural stone. You know, not, not blocks. It was, it was very unnatural and to what they wanted. And now we're trying to finish the last piece.
Okay. Do you know the hardship on which that site plan was approved? Because it's closer to the property line than it's-
It, it was because we had nowhere else to go. We really wanted it on the north side of the property, which we could have gotten away and wouldn't have needed the, the variance except the septic is there, the curtain drains are there. Um, the propane tank and assorted other things are all there. The septic, we wouldn't want to disturb. It's old, it's old galleys. It's not, um, it's not, you know, infiltrators. When we went to, uh, you know, when we went through, we tried a number of ways because that wasn't our optimum. We get a long view of the lake if we stayed on the north side. This is kind of tucked in, tied to the house, but it serves a similar purpose, so.
Are there any neighbors that would be affected by the reduced setback?
All were on the fourth and asked me, "Did you get approved yet?" I said, "No." So we're very friendly to all our neighbors, the Colas, the, you know, the Deonis, all of them, so.
So we, so there's no, there's no letters from your, your neighbors approving or disapproving?
Everybody says, "We're good with it." That's all they said to me.
Verbally, verbally?
Yeah, so, and that was, that was over the weekend on Sunday. They were all, so.
I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you very much for letting me go out and look at it. I did look at it.
My wife was there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there.
Um, first question, the CCA letter that you have included says 10 foot 8, but you're looking for a 12 foot variance. Which one's correct?
Well, you know-
No matter from CCA and the tacitus is 10 foot 8. I think it's just a goof on the CCA.
I, I think so too. I think it's, I think it's on the-
So it's 12, not 10 foot 8?
It's 12, it's 12 to the outside of the wall, so to the edge of, the edge of the, the frost walls, I'm gonna have to go in.
Okay, um, next question. I just wanted you, if you could, explain to me one more time, what exactly is the hardship or exceptional difficulty?
Okay, to, to make it real, real easy, this here, okay?
That's your septic and gallows.
Is all the septics and there's curtain drains all over here catching all water from the road. So it didn't go into the septic system. That wall is caught, including all the water off of the roof, which we did when we did the driveway and we did it original.
That side has nowhere.
All of that is now going into a rain garden that is, has been built and is done, complete, all underground. No water comes off the top and everything on that, the new structure will be tied into that, into that, um, same underground. So it's all going to the rain garden.
So the variance you requested, the 12 feet, that's from the first light? It's kind of a imaginary line that they have there, okay? And I did look at it. Did you look on the FEMA map just to make sure that the flood doesn't go up there or anything?
Correct. No, we're, we're nowhere near that because we are, where we're talking with,
Yeah, I think-
It was right up at the house. It, it doesn't even come out to the driveway.
Yeah, you're going back over here.
Correct. You don't go, you don't go any further back than that portion of the driveway right there.
I gotcha.
Okay, it doesn't exceed that.
Yeah, it's basically coming straight back from where you have like a, it looks like a garage there and then your HVAC units in the back.
And we're gonna tie it right to there.
And it's gonna tie it right to there and back to the house.
We're gonna make every walkway. We'll clean that up so it's a, with a couple sliding glass doors to tie it to the house. That's what it's gonna be.
Okay. The, there's the, um, I see the size of the addition is 25 feet by, is that 20 on one side and 21 on the other?
Well, yeah, what happens is there's a step in the house.
I saw that, yeah.
So that's why they show it that it's really, it's never gonna exceed 20. We put the 21 in there because of that notch. They're gonna bring it back so it's 20.
Okay.
Because the patio enclosures, aluminum, um, joists have a 20-foot limit in their design criteria without going into yet another level of design. So we're gonna keep it at that, we're not gonna-
That first light line, that comes, you know, when you come down your stone steps back there and there's that rock wall on the right, it basically comes to right about there. So you come down your steps and then where there was that little stone wall on the right, is that pretty much where that line goes?
It, it, it's close and that is, that, yeah.
For first light?
Yeah, that's first light. Like, first light's about halfway between the, um, that middle tier, right? You have the lower two with the five footers and then you have the upper two. Right in the middle of that is where first light's 440 line is.
Okay, thank you very much. That, that's my question, sir.
I'm good.
Any other questions?
I'm good. This one was easy compared to some of the things I did.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, are there any members of the public?
Speak in favor.
Sorry, if you'd like to. Uh, would you like to make a statement?
Sure.
Uh, if you could state-
Camille Cologne, 144 Pocono Road.
All right. Make your statement or we gotta close.
No, it's part of the evidentiary portion.
Public comment, and 44. Okay, come forward and-
But I'm, I'm looking, I'm sorry. So where are we now? Are we making-
This is, uh, this is public comment on the evidentiary portion.
Okay, so Ms. Cologne is making a comment on this person's application, say?
Yes, in favor.
In favor, okay.
I just wanted to be sure, I'm sorry.
Yes, right.
Yes, but you wanted to speak in favor.
Yep.
Okay, so I speak in favor of, um, 430 Candlewood Lake, variance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to, my, this, I'm Rochelle Hatz, I'm the land use director. Um, so I'm not necessarily opposed, but I do have some, some questions or things that I, you know, I'm wondering about. So what I, I would like, I, I am, I am a little disappointed that, disappointed that the earlier variance, a copy of that variance that was filed on the land records to which the applicant is referring has not been presented to the commission. Because I think it would behoove the commission to know precisely what that, um, that variance says. Because if there is a pool there and now we're gonna give them another variance, I think Ms. Temple, if I'm not mistaken, was, you know, kind of peeling around that problem. Uh, we give them a, we give them a, a porch now and now, then a couple of years later, somebody buys a house and says, "Look, we, we got a variance back in 2000," whatever it was, to get this, so now they have also a pool. So I think, you know, it behooves the commission to have that, that, that evidence, first of all, so that if you do decide to find that there's a hardship and that everyone, you know, needs a three, a, a, a three-season porch and that if you can't have one, you know, that's a real hardship. Uh, if you find that, then you might want to say that whatever the former variance was, you know, is now, you know, somehow not.
I don't think we can do that by law. Uh, that's what, that's the question I was just gonna ask you. Every variance granted under 8 dash 6 runs with the land, no matter who's the owner, and it's forever.
And that's-
See, it's been-
If you make a stipulation, though, I imagine that would, would, you know, over, you know, supersede that or override somehow. I don't know.
Hey, if you put the pool in, you had to get rid of the other variance or something?
I, I don't, I don't know. And I, this is the question, this is why I'm bringing it up. That's the first point, that's my-
I guess, point of order, shouldn't this be what we talk about?
And deliberations?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes, she's making a public-
Well, no, I understand your ways, but I'm saying as far as our conversation about this.
It should, would be something for- thank you.
Okay, that's, that is a, that's a good point. It's not a debate here. It's just, so that, that's point number one I'd like to bring up that you may want to consider, you know, even possibly consulting an attorney, our land use attorney. The second thing is, me and I had no idea about this other, other variance and I, forgive me for not reviewing the files beforehand. This, the other thing is, um, um, I, I would suggest that if you do decide to, you know, find that there's a hardship and, um, a, you know, the, the, um, the property should be equipped with a porch, um, that you would require an as-built as part of the, um, you know, part of the conditions of the approval, I, of the variant, of, of the variance. I, and I think that, you know, in general, that probably should be your mode because when one or, when, uh, when a variance is granted, it's usually, it should be for a specific measurement. As I think you, Mr. Donnelly, were trying to ascertain there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Those are just two of my comments for this mission to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any closing comments you'd like to make?
The only thing that is, is that CCA did do a complete as-built and where it's listed is exactly where it is gonna go. So there is an as-built. Because of phase one of the work that we did there in the, in the rear yard, we as-built it everything, okay? And as an engineer, I do that as a matter of course, even for my own benefit. So that is on record with the town. They have the as-built from phase one.
If I may, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm talking about an as-built after the porch is built. You can't have an as-built of something that's not yet built. So that would be in addition, so CCA would go back out there, shoot the lines for the four corners of the new addition and then put them on the survey and submit it, um, to the land use department. Thank you.
I, uh, closing comments?
That's, that's the normal course of action. I don't find that, uh, that's something, that's something we would do automatically, so.
Not everyone does.
I own the place and, you know, I'll leave it for the kids so everything is lined up properly, so. We did it, we did it without anybody asking us the first time we're gonna do the same thing.
We certainly appreciate that. Most of you don't.
There's one, there's this one, but it's not for a pool.
Okay, uh, well then I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion of this application.
Move to close the evidentiary portion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the-
So the public hearing is-
This, that's the closing of that public hearing, so now we're going on to the next case and after we-
I mean, evidentiary is another weird term I've never heard of.
Yes, evidentiary.
Evidentiary portion, I mean, close the public hearing.
That's the way we say it, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, so on to the next public hearing is 144 Pocono Road, Z dash 22 dash 41. Don't think we have any letters on this one either, so.
I think there was one.
Oh, was there?
Uh, it was in the one from the neighbor across the street.
Yes.
I think there's one.
Yes, okay. So let's read this in.
In favor.
Yes, there's one letter we received in favor of the application. To whom it may concern, Camille Cologne, am I saying that right? Cologne?
Cologne.
Camille Cologne should be allowed to erect an above-ground pool and deck on her property. I do not oppose this variance. That is signed, can't quite make out, signature 149 Pocono Road.
Do you know that neighbor's name, man?
149-
Maria Russo?
Maria.
Maria Russo, Maria Russo.
Maria Russo, 149 Pocono Road. Okay, so if you could come forward, state your name and address again for the record and tell us about your application.
My name is Camille Cologne. I live at 144 Pocono Road and my variance is to install a pool on the deck. Um, apparently because I have a corner lot, it's considered to have two front, two front yards. And I'm looking to install it on the left side, so that's the, the front yard. Um, I could install it in the back, but there's the septic tank there and to the right side of the house, it would be too close, I believe it'll be 10 feet from the side of the house. And that's also my idea of my backup septic, just in case something, I have to relocate. And I think that's it. So, for anything else.
Do we have any questions?
I'm done.
So the, um, the pool would be on the Dean Road side?
Yes, the Dean Road side.
Which, which I guess in relation to the, your driveway and the front of your house is, would be, for you, the side yard, although it is also a, a front yard since you are a corner.
Right.
I have a couple of questions for you, ma'am, if it ever is done. Uh, thank you very much for letting me go out in this corner. Okay, um, first question is, why not the northern side of the house? Um, and you can feel free to look at this.
Sure.
This is your house, right?
Yes.
Google Street View is awesome. Okay, so if we come down here. Um, that, that was my first question. That was, so-
So that's the side that I consider the right side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the septic tank is on the back and it runs a little bit over here.
Yep, I saw that.
So I find that on this side, it would be too close to the side and that would be my reserve.
Oh, okay, if you had to build on to the septic or something like that, I got you.
I find that to be my reserve.
Next question. I don't know if you, it's an as-built and I'm just learning as-bills too, but the septic pretty much, this is a copy of the town's as-built of your septic now. So this is the back of your house. It comes out, the tank's there and then they have three fields. And then this 35 feet, it looks like it kind of protrudes out past the side of the house. Does that look accurate to you?
Yes.
Okay, so that's accurate. So that's where the septic is. And you wanted to keep that free in case you had to add on to this?
Mm-hmm.
I understand. Um, next question. All right, let's, let me back up on your house here. Would, would you be opposed, and you have beautiful plantings, the, the trees and I don't know what these are. What are those little pines? They're like eight feet tall?
Christmas trees, they're called.
Do they always stay like that tall or eight, 10 feet, something like that?
They, they, they were planted miniature, so they've been growing.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, would, would you be opposed if we had a stipulation on it to maybe put a few more of those, I guess they're pines? Pine trees in or anything? Would, would that be something that would be okay with you, ma'am?
So-
Does your pool's gonna be like right dead center over there, I'm guessing, right?
Right.
You can show me.
Right here.
Okay, so back over there and it's like, I think it's 30 feet out from the edge of the house is where it starts?
Yes.
How, how would you feel if, if we had a stipulation on it, just to have a, you know, a few more of those pines in there, ma'am?
Pines?
I, yeah, is that what those are?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They're big. They're bigger than this. They're actually almost-
Yeah, no, I, I saw them. They're about eight feet and pretty much 21 feet apart. I calculated them out there when I was walking out, actually. And I drew a map when I was over there at your house, but that's, that's what I came up with. Would, would that be something?
Would it be for privacy or?
Well, there's, there's big gaps there and my kind of concern is, and I don't know if it is because you really don't have anybody speaking against it or not, is property values later on down the road? May, maybe people don't have a big deal with it. Maybe they'll do, I don't know. I don't-
Are you, are you talking about the Dean Road side or?
Yeah, that's the Dean Road side. Uh, we didn't get any letters or anything on that and, I mean, it's beautiful.
So the, the people across the street that, both of them, they have one?
Yeah, they're on-
And the people on my-
They're on the other side.
Right, they also have an above-ground pool with a deck.
Okay. All right, that was just a question, ma'am.
Okay.
It's beautiful.
Chairman, are you saying it for sound? Are you saying?
Well, it's also sound barrier too, yeah. So that was just a question. It doesn't necessarily have to be on there. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I mean, in the future, I would like to-
Just wondering how you felt. It's, it's very beautiful.
I was thinking of mentioning a, a, a deck somewhere, maybe around it, just for safety as well, so that's-
And you're gonna have a four-foot, is it four or five-foot you have to have by code, fence around it?
Yes, yes.
It's five-foot? Okay, it's gonna have the little safety lever on it, the magnetic safety lever, so kids can't wander in there?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Do you-
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you know how, um, how close you are, the proposed location is to?
Dean?
Uh, I was gonna say this, uh, this, your edge here. I mean, one, is that? I mean, one, is that?
Well, yeah, she is, okay, so it's going here. You mean, you mean the wetlands portion over there?
I, I'm wondering if there's room to move it a little bit further from Pocono Road.
Well, her septic, here's the septic, my question.
Yeah, the septic's right here, but if the pool's here, there should be room to just push it.
There's a lot of room. That's, uh...
That's, I mean, I can see the wetland, but the wetlands don't go until...
You have to be...
There should be room, I believe, to move it closer to, what is it called? Uh, west. Yeah, further, further west, to, closer to your, to the neighbor at, uh, 27 Dean Road.
Yeah, right now it's, uh, roughly lined up with the rear of your house, ma'am, about, and it starts about thirty-two feet off? That's, that's what your map shows here? It starts about thirty-two?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you're talking...
It looks like it's equidistant between the two property lines, roughly. But I'm saying, Carl, you could move it a little bit more to...
Yeah, I'm thinking you could move it further back from Pocono Road because the, the whole purpose of, uh, not having a pool in the front yard in the first place is the visibility of it. So to push it further back away from Pocono Road would, uh, help. It would still be in the front yard, but it would be more compliant, I guess you could say.
Could it go further back because I thought it would be an issue with wetlands?
Um, it's the, Rochelle, mind if I ask you that? Usually it would be Mr. Law, but I believe it's seventy-five feet they have to be from the wetlands?
Yes, but unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, thank you for asking, um, I mean, sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman, um, the, uh, this map is the layman's map, so to speak. Um, I, you know, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, the top of my head, exactly where the wetlands end. This is what most of the public sees, but I have different maps that...
And the GAS isn't a hundred percent accurate here, right?
Of course not, but, you know, so Ms. Colon is going to be getting a wetlands, um, application. May I ask you, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, do you know the, um, the setback for this? What is, what is the allowed setback?
Uh, well, this is a front yard pool, so there's no allowed setback.
It's a structure in the front yard because of the side road, Dean Road.
Right, right. I, I understand that problem, but generally speaking for, for set, for this...
Uh, thirty feet for this.
It's a thirty, okay, I see, I see, all right.
R, R forty.
Yeah, it's an R forty, so thirty feet would be the standard, so.
Yeah, so that, so that, um, the seventy-five-foot, um, specification...
I believe that is, don't quote me on it, I think it's...
No, it is seventy-five.
Seventy-five from the wetlands.
Providing, providing this is accurate, you know.
But you're saying, you're saying that's the required distance...
From the wetlands, correct.
From the wetlands for a structure.
Correct.
Right, because the, it looks like the whole dimension on the Dean Road side is what, a hundred and fourteen feet?
Yes.
That's probably right on.
So, so, let's see, so it wouldn't be seventy-five feet away.
Right, so in that case, totally.
I mean, even where it is now is seventy-five feet away.
Yeah, so that's something wetlands would need to, you know, to walk.
I have, can I ask Rochelle a quick question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind? But just to, um, the original intent and, and your understanding of, uh, three dot four A dot three B, which is structure in front yard, what would be your interpretation of that, ma'am?
In the zoning regulations?
Yeah, what was the original intent and why they did that?
Well, because, you know, something in the, a pool in the side, in what's normally the side yard, is, is now affecting two side yard. I mean, it's, it's, it's all, it's a problem in every town because, you know...
Could be a pool, could be a shed, it could be anything.
But now, because now you're possibly obstructing the view of, or, you know, um, you're somehow, um, changing or, you know, harming the view, let's call it, of two, you know, two neighbors on, you know, in two different ways.
Cause there's two front yards, for two roads.
So, I mean, it, it, you know, it's, this is a very typical application because the rule, the regulation is a little bit on, I, you know, on, I don't know, it's unfair, but it's certainly a difficult regulation, and I think that, you know, your charge is to determine whether, in fact, it's a hardship in this case. It may not be a hardship in every case, but, so, but that's, those are the ways the regulations are written, and, you know, this applicant is seeking relief from those regulations.
Thank you, thank you. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a question?
No, I, well, I'm just, the question I guess I have is, but it isn't, it is not purview to make that determination about the wetlands requirement, but...
Right, that is...
But if, if this, if that's the correct, uh, stipulation, I don't see how it can be met, um, in this instance.
Right, so if it's, yeah, so if it's not met, that's something that you'd have to go to wetlands for to also get approval for.
I, yeah, I think Mr. Brinson's point is well taken, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult to say whether the cart is being put before the horse because if, if Ms. Colon can't get through wetlands, you know, then, and you've given a variance...
And we've already given a variance.
It's now, now you've given a variance or something she can't do anyway.
So, is it standard for these things to just go to wetlands first and get approval there and then come to us?
That would seem to be the right, the best way.
It seems like kind of we're both just waiting for the other to...
Normally stuff goes to wetlands and then come, works his way over to here, this was...
But she didn't know.
It's certainly a smoother, it's a smoother, um, smoother application process. That's not to say that, and I know, Ms. Colon, you tried to go to the earlier wetlands, but we just couldn't get that together for the scheduling time and everything.
Oh, did, oh, you went, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So it was postponed until the eleventh.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, that's the short of it, really.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Ralph Roosevelt, 438 Candlewood Lake Road. Absolutely in favor.
We have letters.
Uh, we've, we've read the letter and...
Yes, it was on line.
I would just like to ask another question, not, again, not, I'm not stating opposed or a favorite of the application, but, uh, and I, you know, I, um, yeah, I, you know, I just suppose, um, I'm having difficulty, once again, with the nonspecificity of exactly where the pool's gonna go, and you also brought that up somewhat, but I'm, you know, variances, as I say, are specific. Uh, you're varying, uh, by a specific measurement typically. You know, I, if, you know, I don't know, are these, are these, um, the exact dimensions of the deck that's being put on, thirty-five by thirty-nine? I mean, is that, you know, and is it going to be exactly, what is that, fifty-five feet from the front, or thirty-five feet, fifty-three from the side? I, I just don't know if, if this particular diagram shows specifically what we need to see. Um, so that's my two cents, just again, food for thought. Thank you.
Our procedures do say that we need to require the filing of a survey prepared by a licensed land surveyor, when the variance is dimensional in nature, or such survey is integral to the understanding of the application.
So I would add to that, or just, in some ways, I guess, um, make that a little bit more difficult because, um, you're, because Ms. Colon is not actually asking, in this case, for a specific variant, a, a measured variance, because she's simply asking for relief from the side yard, on the side yard requirement, so it's... You know what I'm saying? So it, so in some ways, I guess she's really not, Ms. Colon's not asking...
So it's not dimensional in nature.
Well, the, well, the, the location, uh, falls within the appropriate setbacks for the property, so the, so the setback, uh, issue is not, not a issue.
It's not a problem.
Right, I think what Rochelle's saying is that because the approval is based on just being in the front yard, that once it's approved, we might be approving it on the understanding that it is the size in this diagram, but once we approve a front yard pool, that size is then can be whatever you want unless you set those grounds where you approve.
Right, yeah, well, that could be, yeah, I assume that could be stipulated in the approval.
Yes.
Right, that could be, uh, yeah. Okay, uh, is there any closing remarks you'd like to make?
I would just like to say for the record that I intend to put it where it is.
Yeah.
Take it two feet from the side, from the front and from the side. That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion of this application.
Move to close the evidentiary portion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second from Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to our final application for this evening, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three. Right? All right, did it go next though? No, sorry, it's Z dash twenty-two dash twenty, sixty-old bridge.
Harry Menezes, sixty-old bridge road, and I'll preface this by saying I'm not an engineer, so terminology here might be tough. So I was here a couple of months ago, and we discussed a hardship to put in a shed, thirty-six by fourteen. And although the property is four point some odd acres, there is really no other place on the property to put the shed because it would interfere with the septic setback, wetlands, curtain drain. Now, I realize it's a curtain drain in one spot that might have been feasible with a tremendous amount of work to put it, but the curtain drain runs into that area. Actually, I got my lawnmower stuck back there this weekend. So really the focus is on putting the shed in what really is the front yard, but, you know, I would consider it more along the driveway. It's over a three-hundred-foot driveway, um, and there's a perfect area to the right, about, you know, two-thirds down. Uh, last time I was here, it was concerned that the shed was a little bit too close to the road, and I was requesting a twelve-foot variance to the right side of the property and a, um, fourteen-foot variance to the left. Well, I also thank you for all the work you've done in trying to, trying to move this along and, and provide some recommendations. So what we ended up doing is moving the shed back, I believe it was, um, sixty, to, two, two hundred and one feet, which I think in essence is sixty feet further back from the road. One of the concerns, one of the board members had is that you could see the shed through the road, um, moving it back to where it is now, where we recommend it being now, um, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any issue with that. Um, also, because of the way the lines are on the property, by moving it back, you relieve the variance to the, to the left side of the property, so there's no variance, well, you, to the right side.
Right side.
And it reduces the variance to the left...
Eastwardly.
Significantly, yeah. So that's, that's my story.
Okay, thank you.
So what, I'm sorry, what was variance, are you asking?
Oh, it, the variance.
Is it the same, I have twelve feet and seventeen feet?
No, it's changed. Um, mind if I go over that, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
The, the change in that we discussed briefly last time, but he wasn't here, so we didn't do anything. I can, I can review it.
I mixed it up on the calendar.
Well, no, actually has a new one that's signed and in the land use office, uh, that we have on the record there.
Okay.
Oh, is that, that's the one you signed, okay. You want me to go over it, Mr.?
I'm sorry, point of order, I just, I don't understand. So what business are we actually discussing right now?
Okay, um, so his variance, uh, has slightly changed, okay, cause we went back out, on five thirteen twenty-two, I'll just go over it now. Five thirteen twenty-two at nine twenty AM, Mr. Law and I myself walked that property with him to look at that variance. He ran into an issue, kind of a hardship, where there was a three, four, we originally wanted, um, a site survey, that there was a three, four, five months, um, wait to get an arch, you know, the surveyors out there. So he, he asked, uh, Mr. Law and I myself, will we go out there and take a look at it? And we said, fine. So when we went out, and please look at this, Mr. Menezes, and let me know if it's right, cause you have the same one that I have. So Mr. Law and I went out there and we took his big measuring thing to the inch, it's really awesome. And basically, uh, it's backed it to the two hundred and, it's two hundred and one feet, it's two-ten from here because your property crosses that line, but it was about two hundred and one feet, uh, back from where the original was. But he no longer needs the right side setback because he meets the fifty feet on that side, and on the left-hand side, or the westerly side, he dropped it from needing seventeen feet down to ten feet. Does that sound pretty accurate, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and, um, so one of the biggest concerns, I guess, that came up at that meeting was the site. Larry had mentioned that before. I had my picture there, but I couldn't get to it last meeting, but I actually did take a picture. So I stood right here at the edge of his driveway, and now that it's all fully grown and it was six-foot one, I just snapped a quick photo, and everybody can look at. That's at the edge of the driveway, but you gotta, you gotta zoom in, and I parked my van, that's my work van right there, at two hundred and one feet, and he's gonna be about another eighteen feet to the right of that, or the easterly side of it, but that's, my van's seven feet tall, that's all you can see in my van, if you wanna pass it down. That's two hundred and one feet up your driveway, sir. Um, and let him see the picture.
Is this, is this the road?
Uh, that's, yeah, so that's the distance he wants to put it, but about another eighteen feet to the east of it.
Correct.
So basically how we laid it out, and then the next thing that I did is, um, I went into the back, and there's other wetlands back there, that's in the northwestern side, so he has an issue there. I was pretty much able to pick out where your septic, even though, you know, we really didn't have, um, anything from the town on the septic, but you had really nice grass there, and it's, you were right, it is pretty much your whole backyard, sir. And then, uh, you do have all those trees, the big tulip trees, the oaks, the, uh, massive trees and stuff in the back. So basically, if that's your signature on it, so that, that approves what, uh, Mr. Law and I myself went out there and looked at, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So your, your van is two hundred and one feet...
Two hundred and one feet from the very edge of his driveway. My van's about seven feet tall, and where he's gonna put the shed is about another eighteen feet to the right of it, or to the east. So that's, that's all you can really see of my van.
Right.
And if you zoom out, like you have a hard time even seeing my van, because you have a, a slope, you know, a slight slope upwards and then...
Driver goes up and then comes back down.
Uh, and that's...
And I think it signed letters just for those who weren't here, uh, the last time, from all of my neighbors saying they're perfectly fine where they are.
This is already part of the record, correct, Rochelle? Uh, Mr. Law put this on the record?
Uh, I'm, I don't know, I'm assuming, so this is my problem with what you, so this says it's application number Z dash twenty-two dash twenty, you know? And that was initially presented to you in May?
Yes, that was the very, very first one.
And now, why does it have the same application number that we're here now in, in July?
That's a good question, ma'am. It, it was on five thirteen twenty-two is when we went out there, probably a couple of days later, or whenever, is when, uh, you spoke to Mr. Law, or you came down here and signed that piece of paper?
Uh, I believe so. I don't know the exact timing of that, but I don't think there's a...
The map is signed on five twenty-six, twenty-two.
Five twenty-six, okay.
So what, so as I, I think someone asked the question in the beginning, where the, the, what is, so it's not seventeen feet?
Right, the application is changed, right?
Right, right, it is changed, it's only ten feet to the left side, and it does not need a variance on the right side, it makes the fifty feet.
So everything that's written about this application is wrong?
Pretty much, and everything that's on here is accurate.
On the here, meaning the map, for those of you...
On the, on the new map.
Five twenty-six, ma'am.
So what I'm, what I'm having difficulty with is, did you rule on seven dash twenty-two dash twenty and deny the application?
No, we tabled it because there was a discussion about a potential second location for the shed, and if he could push it back, and he feared that he wasn't sure.
Right, wasn't sure at the time.
I see, so it was, okay, that's...
Yeah, I had, I had gone out originally and looked at it.
Start with, okay.
I, I originally gone out and looked at it, Rochelle, and I thought that there was a possibility, I thought maybe he could get rid of both of the left and right variances.
Okay, so we're still within the timeframe, okay, that's fine, I just thought, you know, I thought it was denied and he's...
Down the left.
No, it wasn't denied, this is, it was just tabled, yeah.
Very good.
Right.
That's fine, I have no question.
If you deny the application, you have to work on the application for the same property.
Yeah, I have no questions, uh, oh, six months, okay.
Don't quote me on that, I didn't, I'm thinking for memory. Okay, so in that case, would we need to amend this?
Well, we would, we would have to do that in executive deliberations, right?
Not exec, there's nothing executive about it, it's gonna be in public deliberations, it's public.
Well, we can't amend it right here and now.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that the public isn't engaged in the deliberations. Right, but it's not called executive anything.
Okay, well, we...
Deliberation. Deliberations.
So let me just, yes, please, so, that's great, so I'm just trying to understand...
Deliberations, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what's happening, and I'm just trying to say that, I would like to say that, yeah, this, although this is wrong on the agenda, we are still, we're still ruling on, uh, the sixty-old bridge and that...
Correct.
The, um, the application number is correct.
Right.
And so, yes, indeed, you can just change those if and when you rule, make a decision, that's fine.
Thank you.
Except, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, I'll be happy.
Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. On the agenda it says decision by August tenth.
That's the timeframe, right?
So it's another strange thing the town does, um, maybe you've worked in other towns, it's a very unusual thing, but for some reason, it, it means that, you know, there's, the town has six, they have sixty-five days to determine, to, to decide on the application. So that was six, would have been, I think, sixty-five days from the date it was submitted, or first heard by the commission. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they have to wait that long, so it's a bit confusing, I know.
Okay, no, in the last meeting, I think there was discussion, and then you approved or denied certain applications in the meeting, has that changed?
Oh, no, we still do it that way.
No, that's the deadline. No, that's the deadline.
That's in the deliberations portion.
That's the outside deadline, right, and then they're gonna, they'll be doing that this evening.
This is, it's because it was tabled that It's longer. Phil, please, a statement.
It's gonna be in your community decision.
Any members of the public that would like to speak in favor of this application?
Well, frozen call, four thirty, two hundred and one feet is a long ways. Actually, when you It's, you know what, it's, um, sounds like he's trying to do the right thing by everybody, and to me, that, that deserves a little bit of you know, consideration, so.
Thank you, sir.
Come here, put a normal forty-four Pocono Road in favor.
Thank you.
Will you both be here at the next meeting?
Come out, come out.
Could you imagine if there was twenty feet more?
Any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, would you like to make any closing remarks? Just, just to, I think everybody knows, this isn't really the ideal place for that, for me personally, because it's pretty far away from my house. So going up to get, you know, rakes and such, so I didn't take this lightly and put it in the best possible place and argue it to be next to the septic or near the wetlands. Even if it was feasible, you know, to put it there, I actually, you know, I'm going through barnyard, there'd be no way for them to get it back there anyway. So, you know, I am making a pretty significant concession here. Uh, not as concession, you can call it concession, desirability would be somewhere else, but this is really My driveway is like three hundred, more than three hundred feet.
Pretty long.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I'll take a motion to close the evidence.
Move to close the evidence portion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
I was about to hear, I'm fine.
Okay, so on to the deliberations. The first deliberation is four thirty-eight Candlewood Lake Road, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Move to approve or submit, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three.
I, it would, it would be very helpful to have the prior variance, if that's what we're calling it, or site plan, which
I think that's important, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you.
But at the same time, based on the, the application, it seems like there are hardships. I was trying to find a site plan or something online, but I could not find anything, so that we could resolve this tonight, but I don't know, I, I don't think it's successful.
My concern is this, Mr. Chairman, if we have, like Rochelle was speaking about, we have a redundancy in the variances, if you had a prior variance there, then there's another one, and there may be an issue, I'm not sure.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure, and that might be something we have to possibly take up with the land use attorney, if we can make a stipulation that by approving this, they either forfeit the pool one, or, I don't know if that's something that
I think that could fall under work, but
Is allowed.
I'm confused, is the pool in?
The pool's not in, the problem is they have approval to build a pool, so if
Okay, and is it the same size as the three?
I don't know, I think it's the same size, but it's a similar location.
That's what we don't know.
Right, because we don't have the, we don't have the applica, their previous approved application, so that's one of the issues, we don't know exactly what was approved.
Well, I don't know if this would pass muster, but one could have language that said, since the pool, we assume, was approved, the language could say, you could approve three season space or pool, so that it would be, it wouldn't be
One or the other.
Right, I mean, that, we would, they wouldn't be, the property wouldn't attach to it two variances for both. I guess that's one of the concerns, as Rochelle was raising it.
So, yeah, so the, somewhat, the stipulation that it's approved so long as there is no pool, essentially, or
Right, I mean, you said, if you said the approval is for, if you put, just stipulate the pool or the three season room, then it's clear that, that both are not approved. I mean, it, it, it probably makes most sense, although it directs it out more to
At least get an opinion.
To get clarification about it before we make a decision, I would think.
Unfortunately, I think that's true, I think we should get the prior paperwork to see what the
To see what was approved.
The hardship was, and what the parameters of that approval is.
And the, right, and it can also, yeah, and it can also give us time to check with the attorney, if that is a stipulation we're allowed to add.
Agreed.
And just to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, it's short, but I'd like to read eight dash six B into the record, which was my concern. Eight dash six B, any variance granted by his only holder of peers shall run with the land and shall not be personal in nature to the person who applied for and received the variance. A variance shall not be extinguished solely because of the transfer of title of property or invalidity of the condition attached to the variance that would affect the transfer of the property from the person who initially applied for and received the variance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that, it, it wouldn't drive to anything?
Well, that's, that's my concern of having two, and then, but they're, they're there forever.
Right, so a future owner would still have, that, that's why we want to figure this out, because a future owner would still have the variance for a pool.
I read that as forever, but I'm on the attorney.
No, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's why we can figure it out, because otherwise, those two variances are both approved indefinitely, so
I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I move to table it till the next meeting, if we get, as long as we have an opinion from the attorney, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
In regards to this application.
All in favor of, okay, all in favor of tabling this?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that will be moved to the next meeting for further
I wonder just parenthetically whether the owner is here, but whether an owner can rescind an application, an already approved application, so since they're not building a pool anyway, if they, if there's a way to rescind an application.
You, you may not find one. Because the more I'm listening to you talk, I don't think there was ever the approval, it's on the site plan. But we didn't take it any further because it was phase two.
But the site plan was probably approved.
Site plan was approved.
You know, I think there's another problem.
Regardless, we need more information.
He, he does have a Z number, so.
There's another problem that I just, just thought of, which is, you have to take this under advisement. Once the public hearing is closed, no additional information can be received. Now, it is usually the case that the, and, and that the, an attorney can, can win, a professional that the commission has been consulting. Which would mean that we actually can't now consult the old maps, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that needs to be checked with the attorney as well, because we've closed the public hearing and no further information can be we, well, you're on the executive deliberations or something.
Yeah, I doubt.
I'm sorry, are you saying that we can't hear any more information about this property?
Once the public hearing is closed.
So if we select, I mean, we've done this?
It's tabled, it's not closed.
Well, that's
Sorry, you closed, you closed the public hearing.
The evidentiary portion, the front portion.
Okay, that's why, that's why there's a little bit difficult with the terminology, because you're calling it evidentiary portion, but in my view, you have closed the public hearing because you, now you've gone to deliberations, so once you've closed the public hearing, the statutes say no additional information can be received. It is sometimes the case that a, like, an attorney's opinion can be received. But information that we, that would, you would need to now use in your deliberations, which was this, these, the, the missing map, the missing variance, because it doesn't exist, because you closed the public hearing, it can't be admitted into deliberations.
But, I mean, didn't we do that on an old bridge road, we were
It's entirely possible, and this is why I just feel like this, na, la, 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 because it's very frightening.
I, I'm just saying, I mean, isn't that something we've regularly done?
We've done it repeatedly, you know, this
Uh, uh, no, I just, it doesn't seem logical.
Okay.
Great. Well, we are
Do you think we're gonna be challenged?
So the probably, nothing ever happens until it's an issue, right, and someone takes you to court, because it's not, because procedurally, it's incorrect.
Okay, but
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm
Are you taking us to court?
I'm no expert on this, but a former chairperson, I mean, Robert Marconi was
He was an attorney.
An attorney, and we did this for years, so I can't, I can't imagine that it's not
Is it, is it possible, because we're technically a quasi judicial part of it, that we, we have the ability to do that, I'm just asking for an opinion?
I'll just try to reveal why it can't be done, so let's say
That's why we call that first part the evidentiary.
You've closed the so-called evidentiary hearing, which in, in fact
What should we call it?
Which in fact is a public hearing, that's exactly, okay, so you've closed the public hearing.
Uh huh.
Let's say now, these maps are brought to the next meeting, and they reveal something quite unexpected, like whatever it might be. Now, the public can no longer, can't, the public cannot comment, because the public hearing has been closed.
We're trying not to reopen?
But it's on the agenda.
Can we not reopen the public hearing at the next meeting?
Yeah, if it's, if it's on the, on the agenda.
The public is not allowed to comment, this is your meeting, you're the, you're the board, the public
But you've been also directing this around.
Well, maybe, it, it maybe
Have the land use director
Well, there are two
Certainly don't know, I know.
I mean, there are two separate issues, one is if the, I mean, it may be correct, I guess there are two questions. Can you close a public hearing for the evening in a case that you're tabling, so that you're not, I mean, just as a practical matter, to conduct a meeting, we need a section where the public presents what they want, and that's some discussion, and then we separately talk about it. It seems technically, if you table it, that implies that, that for the purpose of this particular application, the the public hearing is enclosed, maybe, but also, secondly, what, what we're, I mean, if we, if we as a commission are seeking additional information, that's a separate matter from the public wanting to present information. In other words, you may be correct, that a neighbor might not be able to come to the next meeting and say, oh, by the way, I just heard about this, now I object to it. But that's different from us as a commission saying, we don't have adequate information to make a determination about this, so we're gonna have to table it and seek that information. So I, I think that's a different, a different set of conditions than, than, so it may be correct that the public
Okay, I just want to state for the record, because I
Yeah, no, it's fine.
That you have to, so if that was the case, then, and you wanted this additional information, you should have said, uh, we are going to table the public, we're going to continue the public hearing, keep it open till the next meeting.
Can we say that now?
In order to receive
Well, that's not, that's something we know until we
I would like to.
Have, that's not something we have, know until we've had deliberations and say, we can't come to a decision, we need more information.
Well, that's, that's what I meant to say, actually, I meant to say, let's continue the public hearing, uh
We could also come back during our deliberations, okay, after that, and if for some reason there was an information thing going on, and we need more information, the applicant had a chance, he, he could have a chance to withdraw it if he wants, we've done that during the deliberation forces, and then resubmit it, and then you have public hearing.
So, what are you suggesting we do now, is you're, you're kind of throwing a wrench in the whole thing?
Yes, I have thrown a wrench in, because I, I, you know, okay, things, things are, are done in this commission as a very un, in a very unusual manner, and I, I've, I've sensed some resistance to my, to my advice, my participation, participation, so I tried to, you know, let you do what you wanted, but now I realize that, you know, doing what you wanted, which was, you know, you, because I think someone said, well, let's talk about that in deliberations, and I let it go. Now, I, I've just remembered that if you've closed the public hearing, you can't, you can't receive new information. So I didn't, I didn't do this on purpose to
But the public hearing could always be reopened, let's, let's say we went into deliberations and we could
Right, I, okay, so just, just for the record
No, I totally understand you, if you went to and brought it back in though, you could have a hearing again.
Our recording secretary has been doing this for twenty years.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight years. And, you know, she too is writhing in her seat. This is very unorthodox, that's all. Writhing in her seat, because procedurally, this is, you know, it's just wrong. So, um, I would say you will have to
Okay, we're all public servants trying to do the right thing.
No, of course, of course, and all, of course, and all, and I know that I'm a, maybe I'm, I'm, I seem a little pedantic, I don't know, but, and a little bit rough around the edges, but I'm just trying to advise you the best I can.
What is your suggestion, Rochelle?
I, I, I don't know what to do, that the public are control, the only thing you can do, yeah, there was a training session with the attorney, when it happened.
Can we have a class, can you teach us?
They're not, they're not
You did, and we all attended.
Yeah, they didn't cover this, they didn't cover this.
Yeah, well, there were, there was a question, okay, so
We were at it.
So
Whatever, I can't imagine that the legal restrictions prevent us from, in any given application, prevent us as a commission from seeking more information, and the process by which we would arrive at the need to seek more information has to be in whatever you want to call it. Non-executive deliberations, I mean, it has to be a phase of discussion where we go over the particulars and say, you know, we, we need to get more information, you remember that, that situation with the apple orchard? Where the person, I mean, that went on over three
Three or four meetings.
Or four meetings, and we finally arrived at something make, that made sense, but it was based on getting further information from a variety of sources, so as a, as a, as a pragmatic process, that's, we need to be able to do that, now, I don't know what the, how that, you know, how that meets with the specific bureaucratic requirements, but I'm sure there's a way to do it, I don't know what it is.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Briggs, I agree with the statute and the case law on it, and I, I don't see a problem with it personally. And I understand what you're saying there, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, the specific law might be another thing to discuss with the land use or town attorney on the matter to make sure we are in compliance with the statutes, but I'd agree that I think the way we've done it seems sensible, at the very least.
I, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on, this is tabled until the next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
On to one forty-four Pocono Road, Z dash twenty-two dash forty-one.
Move to approve or submit, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a second.
Um, sorry, what was the motion I didn't hear, I'm sorry?
Uh, move to approve or submit.
Approve, okay.
This is one forty-four.
You have to state for the record
Yeah.
The hardship, the reason that you're, the reasons that you're approving this.
Okay.
What, you have to state, what hardships you found, and so why it's, why you're approving it.
Um, the septic in the rear of the house, Mr. Chairman, and the right side or the north side of the house really needs to remain open in case you need to add outdoor septic fields, so it's, it's septic and really topography, Mr. Chairman.
Two front yards, yeah, two front yards.
Two front yards, that is, that is the variance.
Okay, so motion, did you second?
Oh, yes, I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on one forty-four Pocono Road.
We've seen many of these types of cases over the years, and this seems like a reasonable variance, I know she has to get approved by Wetlands, so maybe that's the condition.
You know, I would say, it seems to me the better order would be to get a decision from Wetlands, otherwise, because then it may be a moot point to approve something that won't pass muster with Wetlands.
All right.
I would say.
I agree with you, sir, Richard, Mr. Chairman.
Doesn't, doesn't want to move it back, but I think, I think that's the right decision.
Well, either way, either way, it needs approval by Wetlands, even if we like to have
Something, a survey that said it's, that you know, I know that's the direction you're gonna put it, something that said that, and that's exactly what we're proving on the survey, that that's where it's at.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that's another point with the front yard thing that Rochelle brought up earlier.
We approve, it could move.
Because if, if we approve, well, yeah, even if it's not the same owner, because it stays with the land, if a new owner buys it and all we've approved is pool in the front yard, they can just say, okay, triple the size of it.
And move, and move it over that way a little.
Keep, and it's still a pool in the front yard, so it's still, so there might need to be a stipulation about the, the size and location, exact location of the pool.
So you're thinking table it till Wetlands, and
Till Wetlands.
What about requiring a site survey with the exact layout of it, Mr. Chairman? Or no, not needed?
Uh, it'd be helpful to have a site survey unless she was just okay with us making the stipulations based on the map that here are the, here's how your pool is being built.
I think we should get a site survey.
Yeah.
Show her exactly where it is.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to table this until it goes to Wetlands and we get a site survey that shows the exact specific location and size of the pool.
Okay, one second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And on to the last, uh, 61 Bredeux, Z dash 22 dash 20.
I'll make a motion to approve or submitted, and the stipulation is the, it's a lot of things, it's, it's the topography, uh, the shape of the property, the ledge, um, there's a whole lot of issues, Mr. Chairman.
Those are the hardships, right?
Yes, the hardships.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, did I?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, oh, so, oh, did you move?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked.
Okay, discussion.
I'm confused, oh, you got it.
You're good, you're good, okay, discussion.
I, I think we.
We've discussed this to death.
Right.
I think we're all comfortable with this, where this landed, so.
I think, Mr. Chairman, this has compensated a lot.
So, we do need to.
Um, my only real question is, do we have the, as far as I see, the 52622 map, which shows it makes the 50 feet on the right side, and it drops it down to only a seven foot variance on the left side or the west side of the property. It's 201 feet up from the edge of this driveway, and approximately, it's worth close 18 feet to the east or east side of the property, uh, and this map is signed, I believe, with by Mr. Meneses.
So, we could prove as stipulated on this.
That's what I'd like to make a motion for, so.
To approve as stipulated.
Yes, exactly. Well, approved, under these conditions.
Per the map signed by Mr. Meneses on 52622.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the map as stipulated on the 52622, signed by Mr. Meneses, with the following, should we state it all out? I already did, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this map as it is.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of approving with stipulations?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. Thanks for your energy. Congratulations.
Okay, uh, then, that was the end.
The BBA bylaws?
Yes, the request. The next was the BBA bylaws.
Yeah, I'd like to move the bylaws until the next calendar, to the next, because, uh, the next calendar meeting, because they weren't given out, and you put it on the agenda, it was a holiday weekend, and, um, I would prefer having it done the, the way we should be doing it.
Okay, and.
And none of the, none of the commissioners here have, I think, received the last copy, so I will make sure that everyone gets it.
Do you want me to point out the, the changes from 66, or just give everybody a chance?
No, because I think it'll be fine, they, you can read it.
I'll second Janice.
If they have any questions, they, they can, they could, you know, drag, write it out, write it in, and I'll make the change.
Right.
I'll second Janice's motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, all in favor of tableting the bylaws to the next meeting?
Aye.
Was that unanimous?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. Aye, Alan Donovan.
Okay, uh, when there's an informal discussion, Alan, you had a request?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like, I'll state it out right now, I'd like to make a motion to request an electronic device, um, could be an iPad, iPhone, whatever, an electronic device to give us Zoom capabilities during the meeting, and/or recording capabilities for the public. Um, I'd like to send that request for, um, to the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm gonna second that.
Second motion?
Oh, yeah, if this is informal discussion, I just, please go ahead, here.
No, go ahead, it's a request.
I was, what, what is the basis of the request?
Well, we have this, which is kind of cool, um, but, let's say a commissioner or somebody couldn't make it, or the public wanted to view a meeting live, like they do in some of the other ones, we do not have the electronic capability here.
But some of the other boards do, you're saying?
Oh, yeah, they all do. The, uh, Board of Selectment is streamed live, and it's on.
Are you saying no?
So, let, let me just.
Yeah, I've seen it live.
So, just from a person who actually has to work here day in and day out, and knows the, and goes to most of the evening meetings, and I think Jean can attest to this too. So, if the meetings are in room one, what is it, 133?
133.
We do have the capability there of, of streaming live, we do not always have the ability of, um, what is that, yeah, so we don't do Zoom meetings, because they cost approximately $40 per meeting, we were doing that during COVID, of course. Um, so if we do, if we do a, if we do one of the, if, if, if the request is to do a Zoom meeting, meaning that the public can.
It's either or, that's what it's for. So, it's for, it's for, yeah, she, and Nina wrote it down that way when I called up and asked her if she'd have that on there, but it's, it's for if somebody needed, right, remotely Zoom meeting, if somebody needed, if they had a remote in, it doesn't have to be a Zoom meeting, not really, it could be a telephone call, it could be a FaceTime, uh, this is the 21st century, there's a million different ways for them to get in here. But also, if it, it could, it could have the ability to be either recorded and played back later on, and put on a town website, the official websites, or it could be livestreamed. They also livestream, I think it's the.
Yes.
Board of Finance room upstairs as well, too.
They have capabilities up there, too.
And the Board of Education.
But I just kind of tightened stuff for adding it into the camera system, the recording device and all that, but, I'm telling you right now, you can buy a used iPhone for 150 bucks, like my daughter's over there, an iPhone.
Okay, but I'm not sure how you, how do we connect? You saying that we should, we should hold a Zoom meeting?
No, 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 no.
How do?
We went, I didn't say necessarily say we had to do it every meeting, but we'd like to have the capability, so we need to request the funds for that particular device and the accessories.
So, in other words, are you, so if I, just, let me, so you want basically something like this.
Something like that.
It doesn't have to be live, or it does?
It could be, it, it should have the capability of it, this is the 21st century, if we wanted to, but we don't necessarily.
All you need is a Wi-Fi connection.
You need Wi-Fi, that's it.
Then, that's all you need.
Well, we have that in this room.
Right, but you need a device, there's no, let's say, let's say that iPhone wasn't over there right now, there'd be nothing, other than.
Well, we have a recording, which is what's required by law.
Right, right, and we have that required by law, too, so that's actually another good point, but if we had that, right, and we have a backup, something happens to that, it's not good, guess what? We got a recording of it, it's on the Tom website, it might be on the YouTube website or wherever, at least you got it, our room doesn't have it.
I mean, you can, you can get Wi-Fi here, it looks like.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, you get Wi-Fi, but you can record it, you can stream it, you can do a million different things, but you don't need very much, like used iPad, or used iPhone, or use something.
Do you want, you want something so that somebody can participate remotely?
Absolutely.
Which case you need a decent enough screen.
Well, and you need someone to operate it, too.
Nah, you just need an iPad, I could take this iPad, yeah, right, I could take this or a smaller iPad, uh, let's say Janet could make a meeting or whatever, really want to participate in a meeting, I, I kick on FaceTime, bam, she's there, she can see everything, and it's crystal clear, it's in 4K.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, that's my thinking.
I guess I'm just concerned about what kind of staff would be required.
Don't need any.
You wouldn't need any.
Don't need any, because you got an alarm guy here, so I could always set it up for you, we don't need Danny IT guy, we don't need anybody at all, it's easy.
But why aren't we streaming live now?
So we can review everything?
Never was set up that way, we had nothing before, so I'll give you an example, at least we had this.
I think she asked, why are we doing it now? Is that what we're doing?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just a recording.
If we have the capability, as you say.
The only way we could stream live.
We have a device, why are we not streaming live now?
Because Dan would have to set it up, and he's the only guy with the password to do
To the channel.
Yes, that's exactly right.
To have access to the channel.
I see.
Yeah, you gave us that, or if somebody were to trust us with it, yeah, we could stream it live like that.
Well, have at it, go and ask it, I mean, go and ask the board, it's, it's fine with me, I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to it.
Yeah.
My only opposition is.
They might say no.
My only opposition is the fact that.
Somebody else would have to handle.
Well, no, no, that doesn't bother me at all, number one, the room is not set up for it, that's my, that was my first, you know, hurdle.
Right, but we can set it up.
And, and I got this, I got Dan to give us this, because it is, because it is required by Public Act 22 dash 29, that if, if a commission member wants to attend a meeting remotely, they will have to be allowed to either call in, they have to have, at least call in.
Yeah, having that electronic device and accessories also helps comply with that Public Act.
The public does not have to be given that same privilege, but it's.
Yeah, they don't have to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to give an overview of the public.
Yeah, I probably. So.
So, my first opposition was that, the second opposition is that, is what we just mentioned about not having the staff who can set these things up and monitor.
I'll take care of it.
So, if, that's fine, I mean, I, you know, I know, and it, and I, you know, I don't know about the cost, I mean, you're, I'm not sure, and it, and if it is, by the way, if it is a hybrid meeting, meaning that you want the public to participate, um, I think that would be very difficult for a commission chair to operate the.
I don't think, nah, we need a higher, the public to participate in a hybrid.
But if, but let's.
If it is hybrid, I believe you have to allow.
Well, you, you're talking about Zoom, yeah, if it's Zoom.
No, because the, uh, the Board of Selectment, if I'm.
No, no, that's live streaming, right, but.
And, yeah, so if, if we have live streaming.
But I think he's, I think Alan's talking about having the public participate.
Well, it's, it's either or, it's an option, right?
Well, you, you, I mean, must there some particular reason to open that up?
Yeah, no, I don't see it very easily.
I have no problem, I'm not, I'm all, but in fact, I've, yeah, I'm all for public participation, I'm, and I'm all for openness, I mean, that's FOIA requires that of us, so I'm not opposed to this at all, and if you, if, if the motion is to ask Board of, or Board of Selectment for that, that's great.
Yeah, I'll start the motion again, so.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you leave?
You should have an informal discussion.
Can you leave?
Yeah.
If you're, if you're recognized by the chair, you're.